This time I'd like to call a Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order. The Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beckles?
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Present.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Dalton?
Here.
Chair Beard?
Here. First item is oral communications. Any oral communications related to the housing authority? Seeing none. Item number two, consent items?
Mr. Mager, for, um, 2B, am I, um, to abstain from that?
Um, yeah, you can abstain. I should abstain.
So I'll vote as to two. Can we do one item at a time?
Okay. First item, 2A.
Move to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes. Oh, wait a minute. Six. Yours didn't click.
You had seven, why?
There I go. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. Item 2B, minutes of the meeting held in March 27?
Move to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Abstaining.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Motion receives, six yes votes with, um, Councilmember Nguyen abstaining.
Okay. Next item is public hearings. There are none. Number four, items for consideration. Seeing none. Number five, matters from commissioners or the director. Anything from commissioners, director? Nothing. Okay.
Okay. This time I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. Okay. Prior to the council meeting, we did have some closed session items, but there's no reportable action taken. Okay. This time we'll have invocation by Susan Emery, Community Development Director, and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Broadwater.
Gracious God, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen.
Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I see the members' presentations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the presentations this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize an inspiring young lady from Garden Grove being honored as the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove Youth of the Year for 2012. Each year for the past 30 years, outstanding teens are honored at a banquet hosted by the Evening Kiwanis Club of Garden Grove. This year's recipient is Jessica Duarte. Jessica has come forward. Through her involvement with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Garden Grove, Jessica Duarte has become an individual of great moral character. She exudes empathy, justice, respect, and a true mindset of service to others. Jessica strives to model excellence daily, keenly aware that her role as an older sibling holds important influence, directly shaping the development of her two younger sisters. Jessica has proven to be a responsible leader, but as busy as she is with her academic and school commitments, she acknowledges that her parents work even harder for the well-being of their family. Jessica is a community leader as well. Her older brother encouraged her to join the Boys and Girls Club Santiago unit, and since then, she has participated in numerous service projects, including graffiti removal, neighborhood beautification projects, beach cleanup, food and toy drives, adopt-a-park, and a variety of mentorship opportunities. She serves as the president of Keystone Club, a chartered leadership and service club for boys and girls ages 14 to 18. Jessica is an exceptional scholar at Santiago High School, achieving athletic recognition as well. She is on the varsity swim team and swaps her swimsuit for running shoes when hitting the pavement with the cross-country team. However, her influence on campus goes well beyond sports. She currently serves as the Class of 2012 Historian, Girls League President, and Secretary of the Mexican-American Engineering and Sciences Organization. Acknowledging the substantial influence that her teachers have played in her goal setting, Jessica hopes to major in forensic chemistry in college, and she would eventually like to teach. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present this distinguished young lady with a certificate and memento in recognition of her influential roles in the community and for being a key activist for the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove. The city proudly recognizes her as a catalyst for positive change in her club and in the Garden Grove community.
As soon as we're done shaking hands, then we'll get the picture and then you say a few words.
I want to get a picture of you, Jessica.
Back up here.
One, two, three.
One more.
One, two, and three.
Susan, you did such a wonderful job introducing Jessica that I'm not going to say much except to say we're all very, very proud of her and her involvement, not just in our Keystone Club and organization, but also to what she does do for the city of Garden Grove. Our Keystone Club has the distinction this year of having more volunteer service hours to the community than any other Keystone Club in the nation. And they are led by their advisor, Alex Gallegos, who's here tonight, and Annie Vungsepon, who's a teen advisor. So Jessica helped lead all that with the great teens that we have in our Leadership Keystone Club. And I'll turn it over to Jessica, but I wanted to thank you very much for giving her this honor tonight. She certainly deserves it.[786.75][786.75](APPLAUSE).
I'd just like to say thank you for this award, and I'd also like to thank the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove for giving me everything they have in the past few years and for the wonderful staff we have there. And just thank you very much. I know I'm going to have a bright future, and I've tried so hard, and thank you for
Okay. We have another presentation.
Yes, and Ms. Emery will also give this one.
Yes. Tonight, we are recognizing one of our own. The Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize Gus Ortiz for 30 years of dedicated service to the Garden Grove Police Department. Would Gus please come forward?[835.66][835.66](APPLAUSE). Gus began his career as a reserve officer for the Garden Grove Police Department on August 27, 1982. Always showing a high degree of initiative, he quickly advanced through the basic, intermediate, and advanced reserve officer levels. He completes his career by having achieved the highest rank of reserve officer, reserve squad leader. Gus has accumulated countless hours working patrol, DUI checkpoints, gang sweeps, undercover operations, and assisting in Garden Grove Police Department's Professional Standards Unit with background investigations for new employees. In July 1983, Gus was instrumental in researching and implementing a prisoner transportation unit. The unit was formed to provide field officers with a more efficient way of transporting and booking prisoners. Gus has been a constant at city council meetings, providing security for nearly 15 years, and the city council has come to know and appreciate his presence. Gus Ortiz's exemplary performance as a reserve officer for the Garden Grove Police Department has not gone unnoticed by patrol officers and department management. Gus has received the department's Reserve of the Year Award an astonishing four times. He has received a Class A commendation for his dedication, not only to the men and women of the police department, but also to the residents of Garden Grove and to the law enforcement profession itself. In addition, Gus has been nominated for the California Law Enforcement Reserve Coordinators Association District, which Service Award four times over the span of his career with Garden Grove. Gus is married to his wife Candy and is the proud father of two, Sarah and Michael. In his spare time, Gus is an avid and exceptionally good golfer. Gus, at this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present you with a resolution of commendation. The city of Garden Grove wishes you the best as you begin the next well-deserved chapter
All right. One, two, three. Time. One, two, three.
You notice I didn't move, I know the team are working.[991.25][991.25](LAUGHTER).[992.25][992.25](APPLAUSE). I never had to do this without telling somebody to sit down or, uh...[1004.25][1004.25](LAUGHTER). But I do like to say I had a great 30 years, and when I started, Cannon was the mayor, and then I think Mayor Dalton was just getting promoted to sergeant when I started my career. So I don't know what I'm going to do every second and fourth Tuesdays now. I don't know what, for dinner, I don't know what I'm going to do now, so that kind of stuff, but, uh, it's been a fun time, and I'm going to miss everybody here, so that's it.[1033.16][1033.16](LAUGHTER).
I'd just like to say that personally, I worked with Gus for so many years. It was always nice to have somebody like that watch your back, let me tell you. And Gus can handle himself, and anybody that knows him knows that he certainly can handle a golf club, too. I've never played, but I hear he beats everybody. I want to thank you for all the service that you've given, and you know what? If you by accident forget and throw a uniform on and show up some Tuesday night, you know, just pretend you belong here. Because after all these years, you really do belong here, Gus. So thanks for everything that you've done for the citizens, for the community, and for your fellow officers in the department. Thank you.
I'm sure he'll still watch it on TV.[1081.33][1081.33](APPLAUSE).
Okay. This time we'll have oral communications for the council, the successor agency, and the sanitary district.
Good evening. I'm Denise Kleins, immediate past president of the Women's Division of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. For the past 49 years, the Women's Division has hosted what we call the Silver Spoons Tea. This is a way the Women's Division gives back to our community by honoring the top volunteers from each of Garden Grove's nonprofit organizations. This year, we will honor approximately three dozen Garden Grove citizens. Why a silver spoon? The top volunteers from each group spoon out help and assistance to those in need. We want to personally invite each of you to attend the event. It will be held at the Garden Grove Embassy Suites at 2:00 PM this Sunday. We will be serving a light afternoon tea bill affair. Tickets can be purchased at the door for just $22. Hopefully, we will see you all there. As a reminder, I'd like to give each of you a flyer. I also have a membership application for each of you or your spouses. Thank you for your time, and congratulations to all of this year's Silver Spoon recipients.
Thank you. Verla Lambert.[1183.58][1183.58](APPLAUSE).
Here, I'll get him. Go ahead. Thanks. Good evening. I'm going to get right to the point. I'm Verla Lambert. I have a few points to make, so I better get started here so I can, won't run out of time. Due to the last council meeting, April the 10th, I noticed that there was some change in the procedure on the public hearing due to item 7B PUD, to modify the freeway sign for an auto ship dealer. You usually have the applicant present their plan, then oral communication, and a chance for the applicant then to rebuttal. This did cause some confusion for the applicant when he was called. Kudos to Councilman Broadwater for his powwow during the break with the interested parties. He broke a cardinal rule. You don't get any answers here. Well, it's about time. But of course, it's election year. And the second item, in 2008, Garden Grove banned medical marijuana, July 2011. Due to the ban not being effectively enforced, Council Limited was going to limit to 30 shops. Now, nine months later, Garden Grove has 70-plus. What part of "no" don't you understand? I have talked to staff member, and I still have some questions. If you wish to have a high-rated tourist area, you need to upgrade the area. Who would want to bring families and have conferences where there is marijuana, medical or otherwise, and all the sick people on the street? Bottom line was told, we couldn't afford to be aggressive. But ask yourself, can we afford not to be aggressive? And then I, my husband brought me home the paper this morning. And if you do decide to let medical marijuana vending machines in, I would like to see one in front of City Hall. That way, all of your residents will know where you go to work. Now I have some personal ones. A personal touch that over the years, this council makes rulings, and later, if they don't suit you, you change them, such as the nepotism. You make one exception, and look what happened. We have three sons following in their dad's footsteps and others. Moratoriums on single signage for small businesses. But yet, let a franchise come in, and we'll see what you can do. More revenue and more funding. For agency, for the agency, I do hope that when the new contract comes up, you check on this J and G construction. In less than three months, the crew has leveled and now painted the new building at the McDonald's up here. Man, thing, it's done. Compared to the, no downtime hardly at all. Can't seem to negotiate or just vote to postpone pass-through monies to the Metropolitan Water Districts. At least from the newspaper here, Stanton and Fullerton are trying to do something. Do we want more years of this? The residents can fix it, so be sure and get out and vote. And oh, by the way, if I'm an heir here, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, I'm not sure of the last name, regarding the, uh, Eschwa, I believe? Yes. I'm sorry, I don't want to butcher your last name. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Michael Nona Hall, and I'm the property manager for a strip mall that's located in the corner of Cotella and Dale. Currently Anaheim Foundation Incorporated is the recent legal owner named, the owner of the strip mall, and I represent the interests of Anaheim Foundation. The strip mall includes several units, one of which is 8518 Cotella Avenue, and this unit is currently being occupied by Cafe Fisawi. I'm actually here today to submit some evidence and present some facts to support my request from the council members, which is to revoke the business license of Cafe Fisawi. Now, the evidence and facts that I wish to submit is to show that Cafe Fisawi is a nuisance to local residents, and also it's an unacceptable public safety hazard. Now, this is the first time that the council members may hear the property owner coming up with these facts and evidence, and the reason why of what Cafe Fisawi's real, true business is, activity. And the reason why is because we learned that the property owner was actually connected to Cafe Fisawi, so he had no interest at all to inform the council members what the true business activity of Cafe Fisawi was. I understand that Cafe Fisawi has been operating for 12 years, and has a long history of being disruptive and a nuisance to the communicate, to the community. And I'm sure the council members are aware of the history of Cafe Fisawi. And now, what I wanted to do was to basically kind of itemize of, keep the council members up to date of what some of the activities have been recently. First of all, when we came to own the strip mall, we learned that activities included prostitution, sale of drugs, and it promoted, um, public drinking. They have been there for such a long time that, in fact, they're so confident that they haven't been evicted because their connection to the previous landlord is that they boldly would do it in a parking space. We seen them shoot even heroin in the back of the trash can behind. And they actually used the unit to sell heroin and acid and so on. The reason we know this is because there was a raid on Cafe Fisawi back in February or March. Anaheim Police Department raided Cafe Fisawi and arrested the tenant for selling, I believe, heroin or cocaine to an undercover police officer from the unit. Also, back in November, and I have the case numbers for these, November 23rd, there was a shooting, and the incident actually occurred inside Cafe Fisawi. What they did is that, in fact, whenever there's an incident, they push the guest outside or the employee, so they believe that if there's a shootout, they're shooting each other and chasing each other down. If it's done in a parking lot or in the resident's neighborhood, it's okay. It's not their problem. Now, the, we are in the process of evicting them, but the problem is this. When we purchased the property, the landlord, who is the cousin of the tenant who's occupying Cafe Fisawi, he sneaked in a clause two days before escrow closed, which does not allow the new, the new property owner to exercise any right in having Cafe Fisawi evicted. What they do is, let me put it this way, is that they stripped us of our power as a landlord, and the property owner did that during escrow, and give the, basically leased it back to his own cousin who operates Cafe Fisawi. Now, if we, if they do anything illegal, we cannot evict them because they put a clause in there that says that they can sell the business to another individual and without our authority. Now, this is what happened. They've been arrested for heroin. They've been, there was a shooting there. This is not the first shooting, by the way, that happened. There is a, the Garden Grove Police Department has a history of this. What happens when we try to serve them for eviction, they just give us a notice with their attorney saying that we're no longer the business owner and that you can't evict us. This is fraud, and I can tell you one thing is this, this actually made me look further, and I went into city records, and I found out that the property owner, Goro Balkejiz, actually was the owner of Cafe Fisawi, and that's why he did this. He tied our hands up with this so that he could make sure the drug dealing... He tied our hands up with this, so that he could make sure the drug dealing and the prostitution will continue on in that corner. Now, please keep in mind, there's a school about 500, 600 feet away from that facility, and we see kids.
Okay, should we just kind of wrap it up? You're running out of time, but we'll give you a little bit more.
Sure. What I'd like to do is also submit some pictures.
Okay, give those to the clerk over there, and she'll...
These are actually pictures of individuals vomiting from, I think they were just, they were drunk in the parking lot. And also bottles of alcohol that's, we found...
Okay, but 30 seconds more.
Sure. Anyhow, I'd like to do is, having evicted, there are, all the neighbors have submitted, submitted letters of support. They don't want Cafe Fisawi here. We informed them that we're the new owners, and we're not going to stand for having them being a public nuisance with the, with the loud music and alcohol drinking and the drugs. And I'm going to also submit their statements...
Okay, that's, go ahead and give her, if you have any handouts in there, and stick around for a little bit. We're going to have a break in a few minutes, and I'll talk to you then.
Okay, sure.
Okay, Peggy Bergen is next.
Peggy Bergen, 34-year resident this, this month in Garden Grove. I've got a couple of little things. Basically, they're consent items that are never discussed, so I thought I'd bring up something to do with them. But one of my questions is, why do we put this on every single report that comes out? Wouldn't it be efficient just to make four copies and put them on the bulletin board? If people are that interested in knowing exactly what they're entitled to, they can read it. I know, I just have been buying printer ink for my printer. For some reason, it just eats it up. And that stuff's not cheap. So, this is an awful lot of waste of paper and ink for all of these every week, when all we need is to post even one. But you could put four and just tack them right across the bottom, and if people are interested enough to read them, once you've read it, it's pretty boring stuff. So, I don't really think we need to keep printing them week after week after week. Well, basically, my questions this week have to do with the successor agency, which kind of is one of those things, I'm not quite sure why they're buying property still, because theoretically, they're the redevelopment group, and the redevelopment group is non-existent. So now, we have the closed session item. It was property negotiations with Chad McQuinney, which has to do with the water park, which I hear the Wolf Corporation is a little bit in financial difficulties, so I wonder if that makes our, our water park in financial difficulties. But we're negotiating to obtain direction regarding price and terms for the disposition of the real property. Well, does that mean we own it and we're selling it, or are we buying it to sell it to them? If we haven't bought it yet, why don't we just let McQuinney, who has all this money, who wants to come in and buy this gold mine in Garden Grove, buy it themselves? Then, on the consent items, number 4A, we have contract with, for the electrical services for clearing all, moving an electrical pole off of the McQuinney property, I should say, the water park possible property. And then also removing, moving a meter on the building next to it, I guess to make it more visible for the electrical company, but I just thought the electrical company has been going through and putting these sonic meters that they don't need to come out and read, so why would you have to move it on the property to make it visible? But that's to a cost of $31,193.40. It just seems, we keep paying out for these things that we don't see happening. And this is redevelopment money. I thought there was no more money. And I know I've heard all about, if it's an approved DDA, we have to go through with it and all this stuff. But I mean, basically speaking, don't we have to get approval from the state before we spend all this money? Or is there a set amount that they let you spend before they question? You know, what was the good of getting rid of redevelopment if we still keep forking out money for projects? And then now, on number 4B, Harbor and Twin Tree, this is a shared parking analysis. So we're paying someone $101,440 for a parking analysis. Well, isn't this three hotels with stores, shops, and open spaces? Who do they plan on sharing parking with? I would think by the time all of those people park, they're already full. Is it how we're going to share the spaces? Well, isn't that up to the developer to give you the plan, to tell you how the parking is going to be sectioned out? Don't we do that for every one of these PUDs you do? Show where the parking is, how many, how many are necessary? So why are we paying someone $101,000 for a parking analysis of a group that once again is so eager to come to Garden Grove? They keep buying in and having all of these imaginary DDNA's signed up in, for the future? And one of these projects was, has been on the books since, okay, so I'm running out of time. This is another one. This is an item for consideration. Buy or acquire four properties on Harbor and Thackeray. This is according to a DDNA that was signed in 2001. That's 11 years. We've still been dilly-dallying with whoever wants to buy this property. If it's such a gold mine, that corner between Thackeray and Harbor, why don't these people buy it themselves? And the property price to be sold is averaging $638,800 a property. That is a lot more than the zip code they're in. The average price of the zip code they're in, the houses sell for, depending on which week you look at the analysis, $285,000 to $315,000. Why are we giving these people an extra $300,000 to buy property for hotels most of the residents that live near Harbor don't even want? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Rod Powell.
I don't need this. Hi, my name is Rod Powell. I haven't been here for a while. It's good to see you guys. I don't know if it is reciprocal, but hopefully...
It's reciprocal.
Okay, thank you. I noticed on this that, that I'm not supposed to be impertinent, slanderous, or use profane remarks. I assume that's become a problem since I come here, or you wouldn't have it written down. Is that, did I miss something? Okay, I'm just, I don't know if it had anything to do with the days when I was having a problem with former council member Doe. And briefly, I will say that I got on YouTube one day, and all of a sudden, I was looking at Andrew Doe's resignation speech, which went on for 15 minutes. The only part which is relevant to what I have to say now was the part, maybe seven minutes in, and you probably recall this, where he said, "I could easily," and the way, I mean, it's not just that he said it, it's the way he said it. "I could easily serve out my term passively." I mean, like a barracuda, you know? I could just picture him, sitting with Janet Nguyen, saying, "I could easily get on that council seat. I don't even have to live in Garden Grove. I could sit on that council seat, spend most of my time in Santa Ana, almost all of it, and get away with it." Just the way he said what he did say, I could see him also saying that. I'm sure, it made me feel glad that he's gone. You know, the Fullerton Council, you see how easily, through not much fault of your own, you could, you could all be in big trouble, you know, with what happened over there. And not, and, and following the old-school system of backing people without thinking about it. Backing people without thinking about it because it's the protocol. You know how it goes in the police department and politics. You don't even question it. You just go along with, with the program. And they're all in trouble on the council because they did that. I don't like the way that it works in Garden Grove. I don't like the fact that we, we have people on our council, which in essence are people who are handpicked by the people already on the council to be their next opponent at the next election. So that if somebody, if a position becomes open and you then appoint that person, you're not going to pick the person that's going to be your biggest threat at the next election. You're going to pick someone that won't be a threat, or that will certainly be on your side. So I don't like that. And it's made the papers, just, this is relevant, and it's relevant, says here, you've got to do stuff that's relevant. It's relevant because it only takes one of you to man up, or woman up, and, and say, "This isn't how we're going to do it any longer." You know, "We're going to put the best person when an opening comes up. We're not going to do it for political persons." Anyways, the most important thing I had to say was said somewhat by Verla Lambert. It was about medical marijuana. And, you know, I have group homes in different cities, Santa Ana, Anaheim, Garden Grove. I've had a lot of people that come into my houses lately, just this last year or so, that have these medical marijuana cards. And in our houses, you can't drink and you can't do drugs. And yet, they've got medical marijuana cards. And so the question is, I say, well, where do you do the marijuana? How do you do it? Well, we smoke it. Where? You can't smoke it here. These guys are going down the street, just down the street, a few houses, or down to the park. I don't know if you guys know that this is how it's working. You know, you, you think it's like a drama thing. It's all cute, like, like that seven o'clock entertainment show. It's not, in the real world, you've got guys that are getting these cards that, that are getting them without really having the medical need for them, to abuse them. One of my, one of the people in one of my houses sold that to another resident in the house. So this is what's going on. And from what I hear, this is hearsay, and I don't, and I haven't researched it, but it's very easy to get these cards. It's real common in the using community to be able to get these cards, get all this free marijuana. I hope you guys know what's going on, because I don't think you do. I don't think you have the foggiest idea what's going on with medical marijuana. Not a clue. That's, and it upsets me. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, everybody. Residents of Garden Grove, council, mayor, everybody. Okay, I don't want to be too negative tonight, so I'm going to start on a positive note. First, I want to thank the Garden Grove Police Department for their continued service, which as a homeowner, I'm sorry, homeowner, I consider to be exemplary, and they truly make me feel safe, that we have a safe community. I'm very proud of their service, thankful for everything that they do, and they are the best. With regards to their proposed 2% pay raise being put on hold, I am absolutely in favor of this. We're in a recession. All over America, people are tightening their belts, making do with less than what they've done in years before. In many cases, people have had to take pay cuts. I know I had to take a 15% pay cut at my work, and everybody's hurting. At this time, I don't think that we should be increasing their salaries. In the future, depending on how our obligated projects turn out, when we're not $126 million in debt for these projects, we can begin to discuss the cost of living raises to them. Now, I have to mention, I'm going to expand on this. I've seen a little bit of what I consider waste in the department. I can't prove it because I'm not privy to these things. This is going to go back to an issue that's bothered me for several months, and it was the National Night Out, where all the police agencies in the nation were meeting with the residents of the cities. Well, right here on Historic Main Street, I attended that National Night Out. We had about 15 to 20 officers, cadets, and people in uniform milling around a very large pyramid of donuts. Apparently, they were there to advise the residents of what their services are and inform us all of something, but there were no residents speaking with them. For the entire hour that I was there, the residents only walked over, got a free donut, and then had their children's face painted and walked away. There seemed to be no information being given, and it just really bothers me that perhaps these 15 to 20 officers were receiving overtime pay to be there. Were they being paid? Were they actually volunteering their time? We pay approximately 300 city employees over $100,000 a year. Not one of them is a rocket scientist or a doctor. These people are making huge amounts of money in the city, far better off than many people in the private sector, and they're not getting cost-of-living raises. Their water bills are going up, gasoline prices are going up, and they're hurting. At this time, I'd just like to see the, the city take a good look at where it's spending all this money. I do appreciate what I've read in the papers, that we're going to be offering people an early retirement. Thank you for that. I think it's necessary. And, let's see, let me just move on, because I read a little too much about that. Going back, I'm going to jump over to the Great Wolf. Recently, three days ago, Great Wolf Resorts were purchased by, I believe it was Apollo Investment Group, something like that. And I'm wondering how that's going to affect our obligated multimillion-dollar project on Harbor Boulevard. And hopefully, you'll address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Blackman.
I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I don't have a pre-scripted scenario, but I am concerned about the, I'm Maureen Blackman. I've been 35-year resident of Garden Grove. I am concerned about the proliferation of the medical marijuana dispensaries. I was at a meeting with my fellow residents not that long ago, and the outcome of it was that they would have a moratorium on the proliferation, because the idea was, the horses are getting out of the barn, we don't really know where we're going with it. And I thought at the end of that evening, it said, "We're going to have a moratorium on the registrations." And everybody would breathe a sigh of relief, "We're going to get some idea, get a handle on this." So, the horses were not running free. That was a few months ago, maybe three. From that point, there was 45. Now there's 73. I can walk a half a mile, and there's four now in my neighborhood that I can just see because of the new green crosses. I'm not opposed to what the state said, but at some point, why is there none in West Garden Grove? How is Anaheim fighting it? I just wonder, how many more are we going to have? Are we, is there going to be one on every single corner? Because there is in my neighborhood. I don't know, is there a forum that we could, where can we get information? Are we just handcuffed to where this is going to be our new reality, that there will be a marijuana dispensary on every corner? I don't know. I'd say, I really would like to see, and then when I went to the website, I noticed that it said the moratorium was on registration. We were now going to stop registering them. Not that we were going to stop having them, we're just not going to register them because that might be a conflict, a legal conflict down the road, whoa, we're gathering information on them. The people that I saw, because I have them travel by two on my way out of Garden Grove, they're hoofing it in there. They don't seem to be in wheelchairs, walkers, canes, nothing. It's, it's a scam, and I think Garden Grove is getting taken for a ride. The word out there on the streets is that it's the easiest city to get by on. My concern is that when we say there's a moratorium, and everyone believes that this is what it's going to be, so now, when we had the last meeting and they said, "We're going to have a moratorium, maybe, perhaps on the billboards," is this the same double talk? It's just very disconcerting to see it happen. I appreciate your time, and I hope there's a point that we can get by on this marijuana issue. And by the way, Tony Flores doesn't have any in his neighborhood. Well, I saw one on weedmaps.com. I have to erase my hard drive at this point. Thank you.
Thanks. Kevin?
Charles, you coming with us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. I have several questions, particularly applying to the successor agency. I have several questions, particularly applying to the successor agency. Now, my wife and I own our home, or at least we own what portion of it is not owned by the bank. But we pay our property taxes on it, and a portion of those property taxes goes to the city. Now, when the agency purchases properties, who pays the property taxes? And does any of that money go to the city? And if the city buys properties, do they pay taxes? And do they get any of it back from the county? Now, a lot of the hotels are set on multiple parcels. These were originally individual lots that had homes on them. They were all amalgamated into one large property, which is the footprint of the hotel. Now, my question is, has the taxable area changed? Or are they taxed on each of the individual parcels that were originally part of that area? Or is it all now just one parcel that they pay taxes on? And I wonder again, how much of that, if it's individual parcels, the city is going to collect in those taxes? Or how much they'll collect from the hotel on those property taxes? Now, we have a lot of properties that are owned by the city, a lot of properties that are owned by the successor agency. Now, the successor agency is multimillion dollars in debt. And I wonder if perhaps it might be feasible to sell off some of those properties to reduce that debt. Now, it may be that some of those properties are being held in anticipation of a major project, but I wonder if some of those projects are still feasible? Or if maybe time has come that we can back out of those expected developments and drop down on our number of properties that we own? Now, it seems to me that the agency has taken over the responsibilities of a former redevelopment agency, but it looks like they're doing the same old things in the same old way. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby Rubin.
I have a concern. I live near Lamson and Gilbert, and that's within walking distance of Brookhurst and Lamson. I am also a Garden Grove volunteer for the Garden Grove Police Department, so I'm out and about in the city regularly. The other day I was out, yesterday in fact, and I don't know if you know, but there are four drug houses on that, four corners of Brookhurst and Lamson. And there's that little, I guess you can call it a park, this grass and a bench. And it's on the northwest corner. That seems to be a hangout for the people who are buying their marijuana, or whatever they're smoking or ingesting. And one of the men was crossing the street, and when we're out and about, we're in a police car, so, I mean, we're visible. He looked at us, didn't make any difference, and he came, I would say, to within a half inch of being killed. Not by us, but by other cars coming, going south on Brookhurst. He crossed the street, finally stopped and ranted something, and sat down on one of the benches with a few of his cronies, and pulled out a joint, was smoking, and so were the others. I've seen what they looked like, so it wasn't a cigarette. It was marijuana. I'm concerned about people hanging out there. I walk there, and I don't want them coming over to me like happened to me once, where they come over and they're barely standing up and they ask me for a match. I'm concerned that some innocent person driving by is going to kill them, and they'll be responsible. So I really hope that something can be done. I don't see why we have to have so many dispensaries, or even one. It doesn't seem to be important. I don't know why we have them. We do, I thought that there was a federal law now that was discussed some months back, where they were stopping it all, but it hasn't happened. More are coming into the city. There's a new one that just came on Gilbert and Garden Grove Boulevard. I mean, they're all over, and these people don't care where they go, what they do, where they walk, or how they're walking, just so long as they can, you know, light up when they get out. So I'd appreciate if something could be done.
I'm going to close oral communications to this time. I did call the chief out, though, just to address a couple of things. The National Night Out with 20 officers, and also what the limitations are as far as the dispensaries.
Well, the National Night Out was our attempt last year to actually start a relationship more formalized with the Main Street business owners and operators. So we did have staff out there, quite a few more explorers and volunteers, but I was out there myself for about a half an hour, and it was part of our outreach. And so that's why we were on Main Street. The donuts that were referred to were actually purchased by the volunteers and placed on the table for people that would hopefully come up and take advantage of some of the displays that were being offered as a refreshment. From a dispensary standpoint, as most people, I think, on the dais know, we've been wrestling with this issue as a city for over two years. And the biggest hurdle up until a year ago was still the existing conflict between state and federal law. Prop 215 has allowed for the use of medicinal marijuana since 1996, and the federal government still holds to the fact that marijuana has no legal use whatsoever and is still classified as a Schedule I drug. And there was reluctance and in fact a stated position since 2008 that the federal government was not going to be enforcing state medical marijuana, or state marijuana laws, that it was going to be dealt with as a state's issue unless there was large-scale operations. That changed just about a year ago, when the federal government came out and said that they would start enforcing federal law as it relates to marijuana. And there has been some efforts publicly done by the DEA and the U.S. Attorney General's Office, first in Lake Forest and Dana Point, and then most recently in Orange County, at least in Costa Mesa. In the meantime, there have been ongoing litigations in all the different superior courts throughout Southern California and the appropriate appellate court divisions. And there has been complete disagreement between the appellate courts as to medical marijuana dispensaries from a zoning standpoint. Can they be allowed? Does the city have the right to zone them out or to refuse these businesses to operate in the city? Fortunately, about four months ago, the California Supreme Court has taken cases up on review and will ultimately be rendering a state judicial opinion, which will at least give cities and state law enforcement guidance. At the same time, the California Attorney General last year was going to be providing at least Attorney General guidelines to update the guidelines provided earlier by then Attorney General Governor, or then Attorney General Jerry Brown, but then has refused to do so. So unfortunately, it is a very ambiguous field that has been litigated extensively. It has cost cities millions of dollars in litigation fees, and hopefully it will eventually come to an end within the next year, 18 months, when the California Supreme Court hopefully renders a ruling that at least provides guidance. At the same time, we are monitoring at least the existence and locations of the dispensaries that we currently have in Garden Grove. We have two part-time employees, that that is their business, that is their assignment. I spoke with them last week. The best estimate they have is that we are still hovering around the 60 number when it was announced that the DEA was going to be addressing dispensaries in Costa Mesa. Some of the, several of the dispensaries in Garden Grove did shut down and seemed to be relocating. Other ones have come in and taken their place, but the number is consistently about 60 still.
Thank you. Rod, I have one question to ask. You said you have a halfway house. You said one of the tenants sold his marijuana card to the other guy?
No, he sold the marijuana.
Sold the marijuana. Did you turn him in?
It had, unfortunately.
I'm sorry?
It was way after the fact. I heard that after they announced.
Okay. Did you, so you didn't turn?
I've thought about that. I would like to actually turn the person that's.
Probably should have, okay? I mean.
I know who he is, and I would like, I would like to go to, to report that. I would like to do that, yes.
Okay, well, that's what the police are for. If that happened, you should have reported it to the police. Bruce, I know you had a couple of comments you wanted to make.
Well, I think, just to put it in layman's language, I mean, basically, the, if we go into Superior Court, or we go into Appeals Court even, we get hammered by the state of California because it is the law in the state of California. And we tried to regulate them and to cut it down to a lot less than it really is, but if you regulate them, then you recognize them. I mean, in other words, that they exist. If we tell them it can only be seven in the city of Garden Grove, we have recognized them. We have to give them licenses and that type of thing. So, the federal government, when it heard that we were going to regulate them, sent us a letter and said they were going to sue us if we did it. And we are in a catch-22 that does not allow us any room at all. And, I'm not taking questions, but would we like to get rid of them? We'd love to get rid of them. Do we want to spend millions of dollars in law fees? Absolutely not. We want the Supreme Court of the state of California to come out and say they're abolished or whatever. But even then, let's say that they come out and say, well, the law's fine just the way it is. Is the Supreme Court of the United States of America going to take that decision on? Who knows? Who knows where this is all going to go? It's, I'm not making any comments.
Yeah, this is just in response to what everybody says.
There's nothing about physicians in the talk tonight. I mean, it's not a drama, as Roger said, it's a nightmare. I mean, little green crosses are all over the place. I tried to get them, to take them down. I don't know why staff isn't taking them down, but they don't have a, you know, they don't exist as far as we're concerned. I mean, the state of California is going to rip into us in the court, and this federal government, if we try to regulate them, which is what we were going to do, we were well on our way to regulation, and the federal government wrote a letter and said, keep that up, and we will drag you into court. So it's not something we wouldn't like to clean up. It's just a catch-22, it's a nightmare. And we put a lot of work into it, and we don't know where it's all going to go until we hear from these courts what they have decided.
Well, that's why I wanted the chief to tell you from firsthand, and he knows, and believe me, he would love nothing better than the rest of us up here, to get rid of all of them. Nobody here wants any of them. And I, if I had my way, doctors, if they really, truly believed in this, they would write prescriptions, they would fill them out of pharmacy, they would have total control over it. I believe 90% of medical marijuana is garbage. It's somebody that wants to smoke dope and does it. And unfortunately, there are enough people around that are willing to give them a piece of paper and look at them and say, gee, you need it, yeah. I don't believe that, yes.
I'd like to ask the chief a question. Did we or did we not contact the federal government and tell them to do the same thing in Garden Grove that they're doing in Costa Mesa?
We have made that request, yes.
What is the answer to that request?
The answer is that based on their staffing and their litigation schedule as it relates to what's occurring in cities that they're presently operating, they will be coming to Garden Grove in the future.
And they didn't give us a date on that future, did they?
They would not give us a date.
And I just want to make one other comment. Then I want to break, and in honor of Gus's last night here, we're going to have some cake. But one thing I want to say is that at Brookhurst and Lamson, you talked about the people that are there, there are some medical facilities there that some of the people are handicapped in one way or another. And I drive by there every day, at least three or four times a day. And most of those people, I mean, I, to be honest with you, I haven't seen anybody smoking dope because I'd call up and I'd say, hey, send somebody down here, I would. But I haven't seen anybody smoking, well, you, okay, then you should call.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Yeah, but I mean, but then you should call, just like, you know, he should have, when he found out one of his people sold it, they should turn them in right now. But most of those people there at Brookhurst and Lamson have other issues. They're not violent, but they have health issues, and so where they might walk out in front of your car or something like that, you always have to be on a lookout for that. But they have other problems, and it's not because, you know, they're using drugs or anything. Okay, we're going to go ahead and we're, go ahead.
It's a law that's been supported and created by certain individuals. You need to take matters into your own hands. You know what to do this November.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take a break and have some cake in honor of Gus.
Where are we at? Agency? Or do we got to do consent or any of that stuff first, or not yet? Uh-uh. Blah, 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 written.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. She died.
Okay. Well, okay, then what? Do we go to a closed session? Okay, okay, gotcha. Let's go to the successor. Okay. I'd like to call to order the April 24th meeting of the Garden Grove Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call, Roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Wynn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We had a closed session item, there was no reportable action. We already did oral communications, so consent items.
I need abstaining from 4C.
Yes.
Okay. So can we vote on A or D without the C?
Yes. Is that a motion?
Motion, yes.
Second. Call to vote.
We'll receive five yes votes.
Separate motion for 4C.
Move 4C.
4C is just meeting minutes from the last meeting.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Second.
We'll receive four yes votes with Member Wynn abstaining.
No public hearings. We have an item for consideration, item 6A. Mr. Chairman, 6A is the purchase of property on Harbor Boulevard that's contained within the site B2 Hotel DDA, and Greg Brown is here to give a staff report on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Good evening, Chairman Jones and the members of the successor agency. Your consideration tonight is the proposed acquisition of real property located at 12291 and 12311 Harbor Boulevard, as well as 12292 and 12312 Thackeray Drive. The subject properties are currently owned by Martha Reese. Ms. Reese is the daughter of the previous owner of the properties, the late Tillman Williams, with whom staff has been negotiating to acquire these properties since 2002. These negotiations originally started under a DDA, disposition and development agreement, calling for the development of two hotels on a larger site, including the subject properties, that was originally approved on June 1st, 2001, and subsequently was assigned to Cam Sang Company in 2004. The first hotel, a 285-room Sheraton Hotel, was opened in 2008. The second hotel has been delayed by a down economy and a lack of site control. Both the assignment agreement and the original DDA are enforceable obligations and require the successor agency to consider in good faith the acquisition of parcels comprising the site and thereafter convey those parcels to the developer. Staff received a best and final counterproposal from Ms. Reese, offering to sell the subject properties comprised of four parcels improved by commercial structures and two single-family homes for an all-inclusive purchase price of $2,555,000 that will be drafted into a purchase and sale agreement between the parties. The fiscal impact of this transaction is equal to the purchase price of $2,555,000, as well as a brokerage commission of $70,000 to be paid out of successor agency funds. Based on the foregoing, staff recommends that the successor agency move and approve the recommended actions as outlined in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, and as always, we're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions, staff?
Move the issue.
Second. Call to vote.
We'll receive five yes votes.
Any matters from agency members?
No.
Seeing none, we're adjourned. Back to City Council.
Hearing none, we're adjourned, back to City Council.
Wait, Sand District.
Nice try.
Go to the Sand District, but Bruce is the.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the Garden Grove Sanitary District. Please just show that all members are here. We had oral communications, we have one consent item.
So move.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, we have no items for consideration. Matters from board members and general manager.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to vote on that one.
Showed as an abstention.
Yes, please.
She wasn't ready.
Going too fast.
Do over.
I got a TV program I need to watch.
Me too.
Oh, no, that would not be it.
Kojak?
Before that one. Matters from board members and general manager, anybody have any comment on anything? Hearing none, we will adjourn till May 22nd, 2012, at 6:30 PM.
Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene the Garden Grove City Council. Let's the record indicate that all members are present, and we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended items 6A through 6H be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
I'll undertake a motion.
I'll move the issue.
Second.
A motion is second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, 8A.
Mr. Mayor, 8A is a letter of resignation from our Sanitary District Advisory Commissioner Nguyen Nguyen, and it's recommended that you accept the resignation.
Okay, you want to vote on that, or? Okay.
I move to file the letter.
Okay, motion, and I'll second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration.
The first item is a contract with Pavement Coatings Company, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to Pavement Coatings Company for a one-year on-call reclaimed asphalt pavement slurry, and that'll be done at various city locations. The primary locations are first the streets around Woodbury Park, and the second primary location will be north central area of the city, right around the Jaclyn Lane area, that'll be north of Chapman. The Woodbury area is part of the city's neighborhood improvement project for this year. Staff received four qualified bids in February 13th, with Pavement Coatings Company being the lowest qualified bid with the amount of almost $350,000 for about 2 million square feet of slurry seal. Should the council decide to award the construction contract tonight, the contractor will begin work late in May, with the bulk of the work being completed by August, and then will be available for on-call projects as we see fit. The funding for the contract is within the approved public works budget for this fiscal year. This concludes staff's report.
Any questions for staff?
A quick question. You said it's for one year?
Yes.
And it's for, we've never worked with this contractor before, have we?
Yes.
We have?
Yeah.
Okay, now, you're ensuring that we go through and make sure that we don't rip it up and cover it over, and six months later, rip it up again?
We do our best to not.
Okay, so, well, that's not good enough. It's never going to happen with this one, right? Never?
Say never.
Yes, sir.
Say never.
Never.
I have a question. I have a question.
I shouldn't have said that, because now I'm going to hold it to it. Okay, go ahead. We have a motion?
Wait, I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is, would this be unlimited paving?
No.
Or do we have a limit?
It's up to 2 million, 2 million square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, did I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
9B.
Mr. Mayor, 9B is a resolution to offer early retirement option with management employees, and John Clark is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. You saw an item on this on the agenda earlier in March. This is to authorize the Pers early retirement option for management employees. We're doing it a little different than last time. We're doing it sort of unit by unit as we reach agreements, if we're able to reach appropriate agreements. And there is a mandatory waiting period, which is now expired, and this action, if approved by your council, would allow us to move forward and offer the early retirement to our management employees. So staff recommends your consideration and approval of the attached resolution.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll undertake a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Ordinance is presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, item 10A1 is ordinance number 2815, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program and approving Plan Unit Development Number PUD 12712, changing the zoning designation from Plan Unit Development Number PUD 10481 to Plan Unit Development Number PUD 12712.
Okay, any questions for staff?
No.
Hearing none, I'll undertake a motion.
So move.
Second.
Have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, next ordinance.
Next ordinance is 10A2, ordinance number 2816, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adopting development agreement number DA 18412 between City Ventures Home Building LLC and the City of Garden Grove.
Any questions for staff? Okay, I'll move it.
Second.
And I have a second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, that's everything there. Mr. Broadwater, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say that the Mormon Church here in Garden Grove is having their annual event called Mormon Helping Hands, and they are going to paint the garage portion of the Vietnam Museum, War Museum. And they're going to do that Saturday morning at 8 o'clock till noon, and if anybody would like to join them and help them paint, that would be very appreciated. It's open to anybody that'd like to do it. And the address of the Vietnam War Museum is 13650 Harbor Boulevard, Garden Grove.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen.
Yes, I'd like to commemorate April as Black April month for Vietnamese Americans. That's April 30th, 1975, is that marks the day of the fall of Vietnam, and millions of Vietnamese Americans had the opportunity to come to the U.S. because the U.S. were open arms to the refugees and has helped us to resettle in America and became Americans. So on April 30th, there'll be a couple of ceremonies at the Freedom Park in Westminster, and that's on American Way and Westminster Avenue in Westminster. If you get a chance, go by the War Memorial. And in light of that, I will come to the Mormons Church volunteer for the Vietnam War Museum. I think it's a good occasion to come to the Vietnam War Museum and to remember those who fought for freedom and died for our freedom.
Thank you. And you gonna have your paint clothes on?
I'll have, well, I wouldn't call it paint clothes, but I think I can do without them.
Okay, we'll have to wait and see.
Nope.
Okay. I'm not, no, 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 no.
Not that way.
No, 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 no.
She will look, she will look exceptionally good in Battleship Gray.
Mr. Jones.
I have nothing to add, thanks.
Mr. Beard.
Just a couple items. I had the good pleasure of going along with the students of Garden Grove High School, 10 students, to the sister city, our sister city, On Yang. And by the way, the mayor of On Yang, Mayor Chow, expresses his best wishes to you, Mayor Dalton. And I had a delightful time, but I just want to comment on what a worthwhile and beneficial program it is. The kids, young students, I should say, had a great time. They learned a lot, the traditions, the culture, the custom, the history, but they, you should have seen the interaction with them and their fellow students of On Yang. It's just a delight, and they got a lot out of it, so it's a great program. Our sister city's a wonderful city. We have a great big sister. It's a lot larger, you've all been there, I think, most, and it's a very large city. It's very far away. I just got back Saturday, and it was very, I really know what jet lag is, but it was all worth it, is very worthwhile, and if, Councilmember Jones, if you ever have a chance to go, I do recommend it. Very friendly, very hospitable people, and I really enjoyed it, but I think the kids, excuse me, the young students got a lot of it, got a lot out of it, and it was enjoyable just watching them with that lifelong, lifelong memories I know that they'll have from that experience. So that's one item. The second item, something that's coming up in my end of town, and I know I'll see some fellow council members there and the mayor, most likely, is the pushcart derby for the Cub Scouts there, and they'll have 120 scouts, and this is the 11th year. I was there from day one as a participant, as a parent, and I know the joy and delight that these kids have, going down the only hill, racing hill in Garden Grove is what, Springdale and Lam, excuse me, Lamson, yeah, right across from Garden, the Garden School there. So I encourage you, if anybody wants to come out at 9 o'clock, please do so. It's enjoyable to see what the kids in action and participate. I think they have some carnival booths there and such, so it's a good time. So if you want to see Cub Scouts in action, you'll see them there Saturday at 9:00 AM, Springdale and Lamson. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. A couple days ago, they had an event at the Crystal Cathedral called The Lucky Few, and they were honoring about eight or 10 American Navy captains that had participated in bringing, saving many lives and bringing about 130,000 Vietnamese refugees. Some of them, I think, went from Saigon to the Philippines, and they went different places, but it was really interesting because there were so many people, there was about 2,000 people at the Crystal Cathedral, and some of these people had, they renewed friendships with people when they had come over in 1975 and had not seen each other since. And it was just one story after another about the heroic things that were done by Vietnamese Navy, the United States Navy, and some of these captains had just kept going back and back, and helicopter pilots that they, had they not done what they did, certainly many of these people would have drowned. But it was, it was really a, it was kind of a mixed emotion kind of event, because, you know, you were happy what the outcome was, but you were sad because there were a lot of people that lost their lives. But everybody, I mean, it was just so thankful, you know, to see everybody and talk to them and hear them, and they were happy to be Americans. They were happy to be here, and they are Americans, we are Americans. But it was just, it was very, very touching, and as I said, it was pretty well-packed. It was over a couple thousand people there, but it just, it reminded you, I think, we always forget how good we've had it. You know, we never had to go through some of those terrible things like leaving your own country, having to leave, some of you maybe not making it, never seeing relatives again. So there was laughter, there was joy, there was tears, there was sorrow, but with all the emotions, it was just really something, I'm glad that I attended it. And on that note, we'll adjourn. The next regular meeting of the council will be Tuesday, May 8th, 2012, at 5:30 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you very much.